Tergamuarol gol.
Senator Rubayi Kue Inabo.
Oi.
Senator Chantan Cho Isal.
Oi.
Senator Stevenson Che Kwartey.
Oi.
Senator Tichey Imru Remongzau. Senator Mark Ebla Rudim.
Oi.
Senator Wumi Sangabau.
Oi.
Senator Kasugi El Tapsungino.
Oi.
Senator Andrew Tabalwal.
Oi.
Senator Mason Yiravangal Weeps.
Oi.
Floor Leader Cecilil Eldebeel.
Oi.
Vice President Karai Mariur.
Oi.
President Okonts Pobles.
Oi.
Mister President Ngariakorum.
Ngariakorum, ya Senator Remongzau excuse, bodon tiran Senator Eldebeel ngia floor leader gi, bodong ti gai giri raureled. Senator Eldebeel.
President Muut El Malugili Tasilsen Merkaw, ma Vice President Marbec Laadil, asilma sesion el al silse. Selabo do lemol mrtial atendargi, nderbor sel item four. Ma muhmu do adapt ra ei tei chonal, ra ei tel regular sesion.
Sigera motion naam dung e segn, nom tirgell goongel du oi. Ontok. Nam oi sey. Floor Leader.
Lemol mri, Mister President, el gukma mesai gel communication emna ra Obis Radaitorio. El mergi, ma deno ter sel Prescam 11-221, ya sel signing statement ter sel lo RPL 11-26. Direkal nga ngia Prescam 11-222, ngia invitation el motion pa law marine special planning executive committee. Ya sel guk pesel ala den naam katmoq el adro del girela tel om suvela marine space again. Direkal nga ngi sel Prescam 11-23, ngia affirming the initiative of House Joint Resolution 11-38, ya sel masada ra airport runway extension. Direnga ngia Prescam 11-224, ngia transmita Presidential Proclamation 22-331. Cloud to three proclamation, ndirekal bodong mesri ngi. Ya gi da gi guk na ra Obis Radaitorio, do mesai gel guk emna ra Department Head sel may. Ngari ngi sel Department Communication 11-50, ya sel emna ra Ministry of Finance, sel mel girel sel ROP Financial Report ra fourth quarter ended September 3, 2022. Ya gi da lemol mri mar sel item seven, ya gel guk na ra House of Delegates, nga ngia HOD Communication 11-125, ya transmita House Bill 11-68-7SST1 for consideration of Senate. Direkal nga ngia House of Delegate Communication 11-126, transmitala House Joint Resolution 11-39-9S, direkal for our consideration. Direnga ngi HOD Communication 11-127, ngia guk transmita House Joint Resolution 11-40-9S, direkal bodong mesri ngi sel debora appropriate partagale. Sel mulu bongala, HOD Communication 11-128, ya nga transmita House Joint Resolution 11-41-9S, direkal bodong mesri ngi sel debora resolution calendar. Ya gi da amna ra House el may, gi da lemol mri mar sel item eight, Report of Standing Committee. Ma muhmu do adapt ra Standing Committee Report Number 11-134, ya nga girela House Joint Resolution 11-37-8S.
Sigera motion naam dung e segn, nom bodon tirat chairman ra RCTD, bod muskida report Senator Rudim.
Amalmsaula, Mister President, emalugili tasins, emalugili tasins Marbec Laad. Tel Standing Committee Report 11-134, amalmsaudra House Joint Resolution 11-37-8S. President, tel resolution, joint resolution, ya nga tirao ra October 18 Senate session. Ya gukwa tura ala du la. Mel dung ra wala, ma ontrial merro gul membersa tel vlay, egan do dambla di fe ringil muutel mreka committee ra gara RCTV. Sel obora page three la committee report, Mister President, o reflecter segi da l event, alastal paragraph. Ya ontil tel lolela Senate, akmula se me do muhutai gel emso de la wa indo Pacific, ma tonga gel bebi ra walu, ra gukwa modaga gangestere ngi da tonga ekonomi. Tel House Joint Resolution, Mister President, lo well introducer ngia House of Delegates, amena introducer al Mister Li Oto del delegate ra walu ngotpa. A diol ngit ra walu ra amri gel, lo se bemali invest ra walu robelaw. Diya sel do mesri ngi resolution, Mister President, di general lo ngit, tel daal wala tak, lo se ngara knel il seobai. Diol ngit la se amri gel bel involva a investment, ta wala nga bebi ra kumbalitin, mesri isorabelaw, mel dayver shifara magi, telekal do si siltamen, lo muhla bebi ra beselur ngi la walu robelaw. Segi da, Mister President, ya malmsaula membersa la committee, direkal lela in putser tirma gi mletli napreni, muhlu tuta misgi mo la signature, do nga ngi gel bebi oversight la committee, muhla katmoq, majel goon dasen o reflecter sel October 18, 2022 sesion. Sula, Mister President.
Sula Senator Rudim. Gare sal mega gament, el girel tal committee report Senator Isal.
Amalmsaula, sali Mister President, will, ma after lunch legoraw, Marbec Laad, bele boera al sils for our session. Akvaldi muhutia, gor a ngil supporter ngak, misi sit supporter ngak al mortiangi, gor a dihutil, lo se. Gor a mal consistent ngi mesel guk gureled, do ngi lu, direkul giwa House Joint Resolution 11-38-8, el guk mel goera invite ra bebi ra, egal blue solid, emna se girela togora airport. Ya gi da sey el al nga ngi ra Presidential Communication real session regidil, lo se. A President tamal swal ti agil tretaile, melat ti October mesri ngi, gukka ra private side. Mang ngi ga gidil ngi agari luriol doru from the our partners diplomatic relationship, ba guk invitation mora a private seobai ra walu amri gel. Do mesri walu robelaw, ya gukwa se asgi ma government ra amri gel nga ngiya. A ngil da al ma egal kumbalira walu wala, me investe bela, na direklo mo effective, dra el lo yaknye, egal kumbalira walu ra amri gel, a me investe walu robelaw. Direklo parti ti agil doru ngi la togora airport. Sula.
Senator Elbeel.
President, tiya resolution, el inisi tringi ra House, ya demrengasulela chairman la committee, nosel te ga gel guk koram le gament regidra, asial guk tal toba da report. Endi gi di direkal, do mesri ngi, ya ga, ngabla waktu, ya ga gidil resolution, el di dol toba, olbi ra glulol, el wa do urch ra President, mang muh, oh remurtel girela wa ya ga gidil tokoi. Endi, goon dasen direkal ngil adu koramo, oh highlight, ya gel gor a nga ngil, malubeng bebi ra ya gel gor a maklul initiative regid, ma alubeng National Policy, mo wala tai inel, ma ya ga gidil resolution, do ngotmoq. Mmm, gor awal smisi i ya dro ulela blue belaw, klasetirad or ra oi ti agil policy, oh do ba oi ti agil motegal, klasikda ni invite a kumbalira amri gel, me invest ra blue belaw. Goon dasen sey bol, lo nga ngi segi da wal gor a teela policy, malubeng gor a basis, tel resolution, gor a blakatakl nga ra alsel. Oh goon dasen segi den, direkal mos smisi i ya dro ulela President, emna remurtel girela ya. Akbalgol, ndirekal nga ngi sel resolution, ableda pasen ngil wa do guk urch ra ya gel bebi ra walu, amri gel masa siabal ma taiwangal, el mo support ra togora tel expansion runway. Endi, segi da gor a leda present ringil ma taiwangal, gor a dimla kalsan mal positiva receptiona taiwangal girel sey, lo wa do gor a di ki mixa trimal blue. Edi ya gor a mal standing and policy, mkatte click, klaset ti agi da gor a lultur ngi bela, ol ngita support ra, egal goon dasen, direkal smisi i set togora diplomacia, sumga da, mo gor a nga ngi sey ngil collaboration, malubeng communication ra, adalongle, ma ya ga gidil blue do ngita support, ter ya ga gidil maklul initiative. Oh goon dasen segi den, mo gor a streamline, ya ga gidil, al priori tirigid, ma ya gal guk blue gira kausa lemon. Mo sebiiril guk ala na, ya gal guk nesu mora, ak togora ekonomi, mo ultauta ya ga gidil do ngita. Kadu gor a, ya kalsan swadel mesa ya resolution regid, wa di bol moitra, ya ga ya kadu besa result ringil, gor a mal multel result. Segi da, di swadel duhli, wa di, eh wal gawlu klatkel mergi, klaset sel doru la ya resolution, eda bosse edel take those into consideration. Eda lutus smisi ya dro ulela ya resolution olbi ra. Sula.
Sula Senator Eldebeel, Senator Mariur.
Amsal, President taktiri gal malgora, ngil daso tiangal, emna mral mri, lo se mkatte tal do bongela walu amri gel, wal gor a diakamal investment ringil me ra walu robelaw. Muh ngil do gor a, do mesri ngi, ndi kor a, direkal lo mral, lo se nga ngiya, sel Economic Advisory Group, blabla create ringil, muhla mri ngiya members ngi. Do amne mit regid, ramutel tal obis regid ngarwurior. Goon dasen kalil, direkal ngil, at sa, ta kapit, tel resolution, direkal bosse agil, Advisory Group, let rigai amra, do mesri ekonomi ra walu robelat, ra lo meo bongil, lo se nga ra ya gel guk girel mo katmoq, mo improve tel ekonomi regid, mang, kadu ngil mesri na, direkal sebeel mo part raurelire tu go. Akwadi, sekwadi suggestion, ma qbi o otobedil, ndir agid, alal go mesri ekonomi regid, me report, me regid raurel. Sula President.
Senator Isal.
Mister President taktibait akwadi share. Alaklawi de, ya no merekal tutu lastum remongzau, eh rida siro belawa, am lo bongela former President Remongzau, am nom li si, sel togora public-private partnership, el stimulate ekonomi development ra walu robelaw. Mang atara ngil example, segi da product raureora, at tel airport terminal. Gi ma, lo iwa government ra siabal, lo iwa ti aiga, lo iwa aiga private sector ra siabal, emna motora besel terminal. Then, prior to that, about same time during that time, ndireklo nga ngiya, a public-private partnership, ra togora solar. Ndiga do lo, ya goon sipad do muh, sel togora NG. Ya gi da lidelis, segi da sey mar sel Pacific Solar Project, ndirekki public-private. Mang, goon dasen belawa, la amna otira blue laadil, lo se. Kemama awareil, so iswa ya ga gidil relationship ra public-private partnership, el guk, gusukmama bebi ra infrastructure kemama, ma uli, ma ngil ekonomi development ra walu ma. Mang, of course, tiya resolution, el dihutie sey ru ngulet, endi, diakal la, ma diakal official position ra walu robelaw, wa ti agil public partnership, blabla do muh bi isey, mang nga ngiya, naam motogora alsel, ai Airport Terminal Project. Mang, goon dasen, ngakabai yo goon dasen, lo se, nga ngiya ala adrugid, beside sel economic development, economic team, ykampak, negotiators, blue amri gel, a di lo se, ti agi da nga ngiya helprmi. Ki da girel with in government, e ngpa nga ngiya, a diakal dir for investment board, investment friendly promotional agency nga ra knel. Len diakal sipadel, lo adid, ok bedongir ngil may. Malibedongir, ades tal adro belaw, guk nga ngiya, abilitir tiel mo ma investment el may. Girel government, tel reburt ringi, diwa se de promote tourist, lu guk aktive ei, ndireklo nga ngiya, agency gire promote belaw for economic growth or economic opportunities. Esegidil mal teel, asukuma public-private partnership. Sula.
Senator Shobau.
Sali, Mister President, akka, direkal dimo ontrial Beclade, emasule a chaira committee report, edirekal mal supporta tal resolution, Mister President, adi, gor ha onti ge, mebi ga gidil resolutiona, sel bada, ochu seringi, sel daro seringi, direkal ngil apol butogabai mora amri gel ra ba i gi. Ma kora mel bedegul, kaset ya gor a di mora ambassador ra walu amri gel. Ki tel, direkal mesaba beere, me ra missile news communication regid, nga ra bebi ra timing, nga ra governors ra walu amri gel, ma nga ra kalil, ngil ochu sita, direkal bebinga mgo ma speaker, lo gor a, Senate ma House ra walu amri gel. Bol aware kaset ya da, ol ngita ringi, ma laadil nga executive branch. Len, goon dasen, direkal nga ngi tirai gidil, members ra Congress amri gel, el me visita belaw. Mang, apol awarea oi ga gidil, kaset, oh full leadership belawa, ol ngita oi ga gidil, goon brak kaset Congress amri gel, a direkal sebeel. Goon dasen, ndakka, salmedhi protogol, mebi la, direkal sel do mesri ngiya gukka chaira fine affairs. Endi goon dasen sipadel, luliya wa segi da bebeere, truadip nouting mora gukka members ra Congress ra walu amri gel. El mo aware kaset ya da urch ra President regid, ol ngita egal kumbalira amri gel, ta direkal mo aware aksion, el gida tral meru ngil, emna mesaba akte, mergo develop ra ekonomi ra walu. Sali, Mister President.
Sula Senator, me kon tirasortui sesi. Do ngga di sesion regid, el mora order. Floor Leader.
Oi, Mister President, kada, motion na mo adaptasel Standing Committee Report 11-134, segi da blar report ringya Chairman Rudim, ama, adi ngadiscussion, mal reariscussion eda. Bon senku. Okay, mal suman di kaya diskussion girela committee report, etirger rogu il goonger, tel Standing Committee Report 11-134 du oi. Ontok. Namai. Floor Leader. President, kada lemol mri mar sel nextel report, ma muhmu do adapt ra Standing Committee Report 11-139, ya sel guk girela Senate Resolution 11-86.
Sigera motion naam dung e segn, nom bodon tirat chair Vice Chairman IPU Timel, muskida report. Senator Inabo.
Mslangi, Mister President, ra te al el musabeel wa sir tel Senate Standing Committee Report 11-139. Tel Committee Report, amo report al girela Senate Resolution 11-46, el ngiya, ngil resolution number 11-86. Amo confirm our appointment ra Mister Kenorita Lambs, el mo member ra boera pa law Public Utilities Corporation, El Lewa Ra. Tel resolution, Mister President, able introduce ngi ra Senate ter ser Augustori. Edi gor amlo, talgibal meo da, abrelele, Mister President, tele, eh chairman ra committee, at nga con Senator Rasis Agitaya, gor amlo smear segi da time, mang, committee gor amlo onula, wurior tel committee, el mor sel ulavangale la alsumula, a Senator Agitaya, ma segi da ulongor nom meo da tal resolution. Mang, a committee amlo meser tel resolution, nom meser sel, el bebinga la President, tel mey, el appoint ra Mister Kenorita Lambs, el mora boera PPUC, ulame sarwza mey ringi. Ngal Mister Kenorita Lambs, amna raskur Emows High School. Eh, endi, nor a, edirekal nor raskur Pa Law High School, etilod ra Pa Law High School, emna raskur Alitz ra Siabal, mang, nor a Tokyo, Ra Siabal, eh emna raskur Langwith School, Panca Langwith School, edirekal nor raskur Nakano School of Business, emna marika ra 1993. Mang, gal Mister Lambs, amla wuriora private sector, mang meko tal wuriora muhra Bank of Hawaii, emno, direkal, amlo wuriora Bank of Micronesia, eh, eh ulu wuriora Blue Travel, Blue Pacific Travel Agency. Eh, after segi, den ya amlo wuriora gament. Mang, ga gidra lurior, Obis Ra Planning and Statistics, Ra Bureau of Budget and Planning, Ra Ministry of Finance, el me ra El Alsilsa. Mang, sera 1996, el me el ang, ndirgu wuriora, tegi da Obis Ra Bureau of Budget and Planning, Ra Ministry of Finance. Eh, positionary, Associate Planning Analyst. Emla nga rabatol training, Ra United States Census Bureau. Emla, direkal, emla, nga ra Pacific Community, emle secretary tra Pacific, amma, direkal, emla nga ra training rabatol United Nations Agencies. Ma, ki damdalia, Mister Kenorita Lambs, lo se, other oldbeere wurior, member ra Koror State Legislature. Akoteng, ngulumpteera idid hamlet, emle chair Judiciary and Governmental Affairs Committee. Ri lutha reelect ringi, el mora 11-olbeere Koror State Legislature, alumpteera idid hamlet. Eh, segi da longer ultur maringi, emle chairman ra ways and means committee ra Koror State Legislature. El ang ser boonge del tur maringi, el legislator, edi urtal at large, mel altuel tel Koror State Legislature, em, dirga nga ra, dirga legislatora Koror State. Ngal Mister Lambs, atirekal, amla member ra boera National Development Bank, era sera 2015, almo 2018. Naha, a committee, uldurok la question, el mora Mister Lambs, edirekal, lulagera ngi, el me ra confirmation hearing. Mang, lo sabel, gor a, ensirai gidil questions that committee had, emno, oh ensirai gel roguil questions, el committee membersa, amle askar ngi. Mang, ndiluwa sey, mal samariaral, el mo sabel, el ser ra full tur maringi, alsumas Senate akonger ngi, diakaw ra, asa rel, malubeng litatul abatingel, el muhulend, diakasabel, remulangar alel, el board member ra PPUC. Diakaw ra, alsumul, malubeng financial dealings regi, el, eh diakal membera ngi dil boera National Government. Mang, ndi uluais, lo se, ndirekto ra Sons of Surior, ya nga NGO, is a non-government organization, el direkal blol baali, el ngiya association, armikari la dal wurior. Lo, is ra committee, lo se, ndiakaw ra conflict of interest regi, alsumang, kadu goongeri, tel appointment regi. Eh, eh, direkal, lo, is, lo se, ang, es a legislatora Koror State, eh employera Bureau of Budget and Planning. Eng, ngomraal, lo se, ndiakaw ra, ya gidil positions nga ngiya, diakal gor a muhanga ngiya conflict of interest regi. Mbaiwa se, ya gidil positions nga ngiya, ah angoswir, el, el mo, obair mula, tolu ngil wurior, el girela PPUC, alsumang mo atra boera. Ngam, Mister Lambs, amlo is, lo se, ngiya, el angawal gor a, onga ra, al implementer sel Lifeline Subsidy Program. El ngiya, olbi ra kalula, ultauta uta, el mora gament. Ya gamenta, olngasol, mang kata, adengi ra, tirgell adel, talgibal makasaya, akarra karni. Mmm, tel nesuwa, gor a namo kloar atal uspeer ngi, el al kobe, do malgora, amkasaya wuriora, alsel ra walu belaw. Ngal Mister Lambs, sa bloelo, wurioro bongela PPUC, ma CEO ra PPUC, Mister Frank Yota, el make sure, ya gal, il bebeer ma, asabiiril cheka in camera, adamahanga, ah, sabel, maria tal marula, mang, angeswa, mortigil, adel maluspe angeswa. Lo, is ra committee, era, ah, confirmation hearing ngiya, lo se, ah, mal, subalal, mo olngasor PPUC, improve customer service regi. Eh, edirekal, lo, maral, emla se, PPUC, girel maringiya, ah building, el ngiya, ah, Obis regi, mandiakadil lolenga Obis, mal klulutu, tamuiter sey. Mal, direkal, lo se, mal swal mes, lo se, bol, albatoka street light, ra walu wurior mayra, imalutal mo, omalom sa walu. Mang, malomraal, lo se, PPUC, mal ngil, el kumbali, eh, ya, al ngil wurior, em, ngosu tria tokolap, eh, girel, maria dalimul, el mostpe renewable energy, muhlo tekadasal, lospe alu. Ngal Mister Lambs, amla ngiya confirmation hearing ngiya, era October 19, er sel, Obis regid, ngar wurior, mal patoka supporters regi, mey President. Ma, trigel, roguil, almost, trigel roguil Koror State Legislature Sanley, Speaker Milan Isa, ma floor leader Mary Anderson Nabyama, ma batol members ra Koror State Legislature, ulbongel may, ma, direkal, family ngiya ulbongel may, ma, ser ngiya, direkal, emle lobongel. Man ngil la opening statement regi. Mang, lo, is, emla se, aware al gangeet, tel omalutka President tal maringi, eng lo, ma da du ra, talungal garingi, il, wasel, bol, sabel, mutal mo, ngua i mora dro ala wali, mo luseu, ma tegil ngiya, endirekal, lo, ma da du ra Director of Budget and Planning, el ngiya Director Qasmir Remongzau, al poser ngi, mang, ndirekal, lo, is, regi, lo se, malatkal mo, gangeet, tel appointment President. Ya poser ngiya, amlo, uhu ngil, lo se, by mal ngil, tel alal maringi, mang, mal support ra, support tel appointment regi. Ndirekal, man, lo, is ra committee, lo se, eh, el al ngiya, a membera Koror State Legislature, embal ol, mal madangea, gal issues ra community regi, ma, sel wurior, boera wa sewer overflow, ma street light, ta ma tengil, diakal wurior. Mang, ya ga, ya gidil, lotangea, es a membera legislature wurior, atirekal, ngoswir, el musabeel, el helpr PPUC, make sure, eng address, ya gal, engal sancela services, el mora wai. Ndirekal, lo se, sel Lifeline Subsidy Program, ah, lolngasor, arbatol lobli, la walu bela, lospe angeswa. Ah lolngasera rabatokal lobli la blurbelal uspe angeswa. Amal ngiya auriora very closely lobangela PPUC. Ma atal uspe angeswa. Ma Mister President taman new ngila hearing ra Mister Talams. Saman new ngilsmao da il klambangir ngi ra auriora PPUC. Edire al no masa dabatokal il giel issues. El guk ah el gu mangmora board yang mo olngase ora PPUC il girel. Eh ma malno meltek mlaseng matangegal issues el PPUC face. Ya olgu mangmo kadokonge ringi el mo teal boarda PPUC. Yang mal kloar blongasuwir ra aderbelaw. Yang mal in touch with. Tigel tira aderbelal malutuy lira aral ma masuwar ma tengki. Dirgal malmatangegal ngesel mora batokal aderbelaw. Ngiyam ru la babier atiril girel. Mong ngomarangal wasay by lapora board. Andire al mal mosabel el osuwira board. La address ayegi dal ngasaklila arala. Aral ma masuwar ma tengil. Eh waseng maharangi mosabel sustainable. Eh sabedal affordable dirgal ma aderbelaw. Ma ultur tegi dal gamiti report eh Mister President. Eh gamiti malolngita a support arbequl senators. Rasanki ortir tal appointment tra Mister Kenorita Lamsel mo membera PPUC Board of Directors. Al mutal four years. Solange Mister President teal al ngivertal gamiti report.
Solange Senator Inavo Maria Suamekamint. Sumundiaga tigel roguul gongert tal standing gamiti report eleven dash one door nine. El girela appointment tra Kenoril mora PPUC il dooi. Ontok. Namai floor leader.
President kada malmalmanak standing gamiti reporting. Ma the person next move mother adopt tra ah standing gamiti report eleven dash one forty. Tiasel guk girela Senate Resolution eleven dash ninety-six.
Seramotion namdunge segnan bodon tirat chairman Senator Isal bol muskida report. Senator Isal.
Solange Mister President. Tial standing gamiti report eleven dash one forty. Ah mliketmok girela Senate Resolution number eleven dash ninety-six. El ngi resolution ah amokan firm ra presidential appointment. Ra Mister Ngail Medalarak. El mor ser as a member of the Palau Board. Law Parole Board. El ngi el kutsela mor eder rap. But I say Mister President eh malblaktacla amokter tal resolution tal title black iwi. Resolution abledin to singir tal blai logi ugao eh Mister President. Serah October twenty-one twenty-two during the twenty-first day of our regular session. By request, the President His Excellency President Suran Alvis Junior. Em le refer meragamit giroj ra JTA for review and reporting. Mong multu tial resume ra Mister Medalarak. Mle sendongiya President de Melo bangel appointment. Ta ngi. Eh gamiti no matigala say he attended Palau High School. Ra uera al bol furthera sculer ra College of Micronesia in Panapi FSM. Segi dal schooling he earned a degree in education. While working as a classroom teacher. Angal Mister Medalarak work on and earning his Bachelor of Science degree in Education. From the University of from United States International University in San Jose, California, off campus. Mong awelalangal ata ulumo es a long time elementary school teacher. Ngaram lungui. From nineteen seventy-two to nineteen ninety-eight. Soon after then he became the school principal. Let's say the school of elementary school until his retirement, January sixth twenty twenty twenty-three. From July twenty-three to August twenty-four. Engadubak Mister Medalarak work as a public knowledge coordinator. With the Palau Conservation Society. Educating different communities in Palau about conservation. In May of two thousand four Mister Medalarak work under Miss Sure Belz cancelling juveniles to a special grant. From twenty thirteen to twenty sixteen. He served as a teacher of adult high school. At Palau Community College. El altaim engal Mister Medalarak serve as an academic and vocational teacher. At Palau Modake School. Overall eh Mister President engal rubaga. Amla serve fifty-two years la lisakla a school. In addition, Medalarak is a Digan et ngaram lungui eventually conference. Selol tirakosel game laal nga ra cutirnya title eighteen ra section twelve of four. Eh title wasay Palau Parole Board. Segi sel laal blakto eight ringiya olbi da dunay. Mlola some time back. Im sakdisi a President mo appoint tra other mo member tal board. Mahat alel matemel. Kamiti notes that there are no specific requirement for someone to be a member of this board by law. However, the committee finds no matigaringi lasay due to Mister Medalarak. Education ma experience singir auriora tora school, banagra school. The board would benefit from his appointment. In consideration of the foregoing and after careful review, appointees' experience and knowledge. Your committee concludes that he is well qualified. El mor ser tal board. And therefore, your committee recommends the adoption of the Senate Resolution eleven dash ninety-six by the whole Senate. Emirgo emegurengasulyar betl membera gamiti mle sanatya. Il go ngem diimlaka hearing mahau diimlaka hearing. At tal reporter ngi. Eh foligadungu. Solange Mister President.
Solange Senator Isal sumundiaga kamint. Eh bodosanki om tigel roguul gongert tal standing gamiti report eleven dash one four il dooi. Ontok. Namai floor leader.
President kada malmalman marcel nextel report move mother adopt tra standing gamiti report eleven dash one four one. Tia ngakukirela Senate Bill eleven dash seventy-three.
Seramotion namdunge segnan bodon tirat chairman JGA Senator Isal. Malutamom muskida report Senator Isal.
Short trishes. I lost track of my word.
Session regi dal mora order. Floor leader.
Dikatamakasai.
Kada nga sel reporting sel standing gamiti report eleven dash one four one. The satela chairman mle report.
Chairman Senator Isal.
Eh solange Mister President eh triebel amokmat klamospe alangara eh dey eh imel boom. Mister President tal standing gamiti report eleven dash forty-one. Amomasal girela audasemola. Do amend the Anti People Smuggling and Trafficking Act. And to update the Republic laws with respect to human smuggling and trafficking. Kasigadomo godiya laal gangir dal laal masawata tokora Anti People Smuggling. Ma trafficking. Eh direkkl mo makpesal ulbelaw girela a human smuggling and trafficking. Mister President, quadi background inform girel tal report. Metial audasemola. Serah session regi ra October eleven twenty-two. Njalgar report ekwadi background of ekwadi report. Serah session regi ra October eleven twenty-two. Eh si siu report tamilgetmok not quite the same ending. Le sanan ngiya betl membera gamit giroj except Senator Inavo. Igadumler awla le manya discussion mal ne healthy discussion. Nosuwe dal keberan members tal blai ma membera gamiti. El mo identify some questionable terms. El tial bila propose definition. For example, abila tal audasemola. A represent a very important step demonstrate ablur belaw a lack of tolerance for human smuggling. Dikasadal eh tal tora human trafficking bol kora hayari lo marura anshelabulwa. Amendra a present the existing Anti People Smuggling and Trafficking Act. The tigeringiya seventeen PNC Chapter One, Seshel Penal Code regi. Ya tial bila introduces a a garrosel itre telela human trafficking, smuggling, by human trafficking, exploitation. Eh eh direkkl mo provide the victims ma witnesses ra ayegi tal tooi with protection and safety. Se discussion regi ra October one, October eleven twenty-two. Amle batokal ayegi sit discussion regi damlo girel tegi dal tooi ra human smuggling. What is human smuggling or trafficking exploitation? Mong se eda report ta dimlaka akorak malungil le explanation aygal tooi. Eh base ra a discussion regi. Eh membera a Senate tamle regamente asay. Mu tial report levo. Eh mu talo meser ngi. Em la bevir at toira sel smisi ital mo understand. Posuwe dal understand ringi eh mo kora make sense. Merad regi dal senators ma aderbelaw mo meser ngi. Mong ayegil section ngariya kora di main il dingari. Ah diimlo kora cloud changes after a further review. Ra gamiti giroj. Igadumlo batigel ngi laseng klobul gula. Ah the divorce legislative funding sirgi. Titelegi mle improve la language ngari. El musmi smisiya mo ktekat tal audasemola. Misel overa page eight tal report, a page five tal report. Eh ngareyegel committee changes. El ngar shey. Eh tia uler akti champion morse gigi dal page. Eh dakngara page one gamiti report el mong. Ayegi kora rimu otu watte bill pro a page one el meti ayegi dal page. Ah di otu asegra ayegel. Lingat tal audasemola seradungu obisra President. Eh dasmodil sel gotal report. Even though the lady ferringi, indeed, she siu toyangari. Bakteen morse gigi de champion page five lo ulta ayegel while major amendment. Eh nevtoy ra discussion tal blai. Igadumor moved. Misel overa page five. Esel gotal amendment obtiger ngi ra section one tal audasemola. El mo amend ta bevir at tooi. Engal sel sel legislative findings. Misel mo meser ngi. Eh ngari sel double underline. El omu lo asay as well as to make clear to all interested parties. The substantial steps the Republic of Palau has already taken to combat human trafficking and smuggling and trafficking. And to make clear the rights of all individuals not to be smuggled or trafficked. Se dimnalka ngar shell. El gotal legislative findings, seshel gotal report misel bid. To the meser ngi. Eh direkkl sel mo meser muli morse giora si legislative findings. Wasay the Republic criminal laws regarding trafficking should be updated to provide greater clarity to law enforcement and the judiciary. And to provide greater guidance in sentencing. Same and direct as the whole legislative findings. Eh finally, under the legislative findings. Eh wasay further, the O E K fans it prudent to increase the effectiveness and efficiency of enforced human trafficking and smuggling laws in the Republic of Palau. Morapage six. By providing for interministerial communication. And annual reporting and efforts to reduce and ultimately eliminate these unacceptable forms of crimes. Eh direkkl sel debora amendment number two. Igadumor sheh section twenty-one ra tal bill. Eh di mo etashet toil human instead of people. Allarela amso dra people smuggling. Eh la gigi amochensingi mo human smuggling and human trafficking. Direkkl sel debora definition, set twenty-one oh two. Eh segi dal esal tooi ngar shey de la. Agadusilal disel ngari ngi lo asay in any manner or for any purpose for which the law was not designed. Se kora di general statement blor yaq question tal ulaw. Asay si ngarabul gul eh unnecessary imkadumna suldi. Direkkl mlodo olira a definition ra child. Asay ngalngal gal tosawadur ngit tal audasemola ngarab. Direkkl sel sel B. Eh direkkl sel C. Eh direkkl malol wasay igadumlo define a coercion. Eh ngareyegel definition wasay ayegi ngarabul gul. From one to to three. Eh sel three. Eh ngariya au. Eh wasay. Eh coercion means eh direkkl mo define a commercial career. Ngarabul gula commercial career, direct ne missing ngar shell. Mesen mira blogos koki lolta kararad malubindial lolta karadimla blurbelaw. Company means igadumlo doolika asay means a corporation, malub incorporated association. Direkkl debt bond it's a direct define. Direkkl sel mo mesel kena page seven de la ngesmo mesel. Force labor man define. Eh digedumlo small ta ayegel one ma two. Eh any il sada eh unnecessary ngar shell no yaq question tal regi dal girel. Eh adala si nati si siri doma ayegi. Sel exploitation. La maloblakta blodu since a language siri ma ulung underline twice. Asay shall occur when any person uses coercion to cause any other person to engage. Ayegi dimnalka tal sel gotal report. In eh mergo eh scratch ayegel. Use ayegel dede delete eh asay sexual servitude. Scratch exploitation of another person by in their prosecution and continue on. Morapage eight. Direkkl ngariya definition ra human smuggling malblakta. Sel J. Sel K, a human trafficking malblakta. Igad bu masandimnalka nga ra sel gotal report. Eh direkkl sel posel G. Asay people smuggling means arranging or assisting a person illegal. Se dede delete ringi. Direkkl people trafficking with lady delete ayegi. Giet tooi ngar shell mutala. And make a reference to people smuggling and trafficking. Eh gigat change ringi mo human smuggling by human trafficking. Direkkl sel overa twenty-one oh three ra page nine. Eh si siu changes amdon ngiya kora human trafficking instead of people trafficking. Twenty-one oh four. Eh si siu. Dar amal kora toblugul change ngar shey. Ah sel under twenty-one oh four. No double underline, sel every person who purposely or knowingly engaged. Ya ngaramong eh di as any person who engaged. Dimnaka ayegi du toorak si. Kora di me general in terms. Fora page ten ra twenty-one oh five. Direkkl si siu travel documents sa dimlak. El agadumla muloyar ngi. Direkkl twenty-one oh six. Direkkl di lady delete ayegi unnecessary ngar shey. Sel momsi twenty-one oh six eh. Eh milunguil wasay every person who knowingly or depressly eh gigi amor shiri asay purposely or knowingly eh no only eh gigas tru delete ayegi restel sel mo 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 shell engage in human trafficking. Twenty-one oh seven, under the page ten, eh si siu tooi. Twenty-one. Or eight, offense of trafficking children. The more emphasize, so I say, every person who knowingly or recklessly engages in human trafficking of. A child in the direct, I get unnecessary, I'm a good. Where's your child? But why she'll all the way down, and Mr. President, the best she's to. I bet the trial, call him a clear, logiwa definition, I can. Terms, she'll do speak. Elmolumora, I'll let me tell the report. I'm gonna ask myself, it's not a story, I'm a. Uh, my chairman, my share it with. I did tell, I'm a best, the goal, I'm a so, she's very near, didn't know. I get the definition, well, section. I'm more a page fifteen. Her tail, the port. Her cell, section twenty-one eighteen. Title, not eligible for probation and parole. She at the. At the deli, I'm. Directly, she'll section twenty-one nineteen, severe remedy provided. You're not a, she got the, let the labile, my report. Page sixteen, Kinsey principle. The other team, the spirit, I don't like, I need to go. The drama, I find it. But the attack, the definition, I'm a logiwa. And then at twenty-one twenty, A, and more I. Cause she actually wish her purpose, the Olvidan law finds that the most serious cases of human trafficking. Or smuggling worldwide are orchestrated by international criminal conspiracies. Led by individuals to be known in this section as skin spin. And that such cases pose difficult law enforcement challenges. And I go, I'm a be, I'm sorry, evaluating the utilization of law enforcement. For sectorial resources, I completely, which. We lack expertise. I like a guru, you're, and you got the. The amo in the future, I see, I found them improve. And directly, in evaluating, she'll see. The farm, look or a clown. Is sure, as discussion, again, last time, I believe, by. Senator. So, my vice president, I say. In evaluating the use of plea bargain, as well as the exercise of pre. Prosecutorial discretion, prosecutorial agencies of the Republic of Palau. Are directed to prioritize the apprehension, prosecution, and incarceration. Relation of the kin spin. More or less, I'm a teenager, I'm a little. And I'm a little bush, it's a dog, and I just want to tell you. I don't know. Yes, I'm talking outside. I'm a year, I see, how, how. I'm a lot of she, I don't know, it's out, I'm a dear outside. She'll eat, I've been, I'm sorry, Attorney General, Special Prosecutor. The more equal report, the more I believe, you're a human. Trafficking, my human smuggling. Page seventeen, I'm sorry, public posting of information. More. Page eighteen, I'm sorry, annual report and human trafficking. Page nineteen, sorry, twenty-one, twenty-three, grant assistant. To faith-based organization, securing. Page twenty, I'm sorry, in. The pliability of other general law. Shall last, shall section twenty-one, twenty-six, minimum fines. Mr. President, I got a report, and I'm close to the report. But I do a little to. She had a nice, she's in the Giddra October eleven twenty-two. And they, that's what the black, I'm a logiwa, I'm a member, so she bought. Strike a meeting, I'm a guy, the vice president. And who are. I'll just well, you're a talent. Minister of Justice. Is some of this, most of this work are probably going to be under her. The official, he is the Minister of Justice. My, he was a family, my. And my luck fortunate, Lingani, I'm a big lawyer, Miss Lori Williams. And I, I'm a state department, I'm a big on contract lawyer. Uh, now, F S M, I'm a little, still, you're a human trafficking, my human. Smuggling. Uh, my, I last month, it was a, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good. And I'm a shell meeting. After the presidential, vice presidential made his statement, and then had to leave early. And we're a, she did, after evening, it's more a trip abroad. And most of my, my member, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good. Senator Inavo. I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good. Not an October, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a. A staff, the vice president. He knew the discussion, she'll. Lurior. And my local. It was, she had, I'm a big. All this year, she told me, she thought, I report the state department, I was saying. I got it, I got it, I got it, and didn't block it, and get the deal, I'm big, I'm a sheriff, I'm a good. He was saying, she has no idea how the report. Was prepared and who care the report. But the longer, I'm a undercover, I don't matter, I'm a good. Or part of the. I do, I do, I do, I do. And my baby, I got to get. If you're a good official. You're a compliment, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good. And my way, I run, I get, I go, I'm a, I'm a. Run, I'm a little sad. My baby, I'm a member, I'm a good. Unless we express the, I'm just, I'm a good lawyer. That we believe she's working for the government, I'm a good. It was saying, maybe. Go, she'll get that Trump, I believe, Ukraine. Quit, walk, bro. You do this, and then you do that. I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good. La, 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 I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good. Close, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good. Banker, I'm a good. I'm gonna, my, I'm a little, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good. Yeah, I'm a little sad, I'm a little, I'm a little, I'm a little. Yeah, I'm a little, I'm a little, I'm a little. I'm gonna. Twist people's, others, can't twist hands, and you're a toy. Just admit expectation, it did, if you do that, we'll do that. But if we don't do that, we won't do that. She did a good, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good. Didn't like the move. The October eleven twenty-two, I like number, she's the report. The standing report one forty-one. I'm a good, I get it, I'm a good, I'm a good. I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good, of course, I'm a good, I'm a good. She's chairman, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good. For a reservation, I'm a good, I'm a good, and the, I'm a good, I'm a good. And of course, I'm a good, I'm a good. The more she have amendment, I'm a good. And the discussion, I'm a, I'm a good, I'm a good.
Okay. I mean, I saw, I'm a sad, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good. Senator Inavo.
Mister President, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a chairman, eh. There are a lot of people, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good. Um, senior. I'm, I'm getting a lot of, I'm a good, I'm a good. I look, I'm a understand, I'm a, I'm a good. Eh, nah, I'm a little, I'm a little. I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good. Cases are below, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good. Uh, my rule, I get it, I'm a good, I'm a good. Most of the, I'm a good, I'm a good. My, I'm a sad, I'm a good, I'm a good. Hmm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna increase, I can find a time, I'm a good. I'm a good. I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a, I'm a. I get, I'm a. Oh, I'm good, I'm a 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 good. I still know, it's a, I got, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good, I'm a good.
Masisi alla. Acti mreha sulila chairman al nosa bel el sel page thirteen, ra e ngel sel section twenty-one fourteen. Eng lo lo liang sel language, sel mla se ngel deal adra blu bela. Asa bel mo file ra, ah onktil el mora gararila aftera blal surva two years, senha asela galbus. Ya gararilas el mogongir ngi, mang maral el mora bluwal eda kalut al may. Al sugumang, al sugumay gel al penalty ludow dal leyaklas sangel, ah three times serngi al pey el mora kabalmenteng sebel al maral ma bluwal. Mang, ay ay kuram lo omda sro sesegida diri kal sebel al orior. Ah tirikal mal lo, ongila nole chairman al nosa bel gonger sel minimum fine, el nga section twenty-one, twenty-six, senha na page twenty. Legal maximum fine amalimis el nga bab, ndindi aminimofine. But el section twenty-one, twenty-six, act mulva say a minimum fine, ada kasel mogegre ra wonder, ra maximum fine. Mang, at least a yegid ya asa bel kora assurance, akmula saying, al suguma adak to melia makitlom rul el mora tarar adra way, human smuggling, human trafficking, ma eh ma slavery, ma ngaraklil. Eng sebel il motout ta el masisi illa. Ndi ngariya role lenkal adha, asa bel lo duruklil mor may. Al sugumang pey gel ludow dal, ngara alsel tel al fine. Mang at least eh, ya akmalat kalo se kabalmentargida, ah namusab la four dal mangal busra, ar ar adal malak tel la. Estill yalla amasisi ma adam dangel va sing, la mal momring lo omda sro ira blu lma lala. Ma man mreha sulila chairman eh president rey el changes of blar rule. Ya omda se akmo gonger support tel ulda son molala. Sulan ye, mister president.
Sulan senatorina, kuhalidigugera. Ela ngtelar raal giril gal busse di surva tuir semrael. Senatoris, alsel mdulo sent di surva tuir semrael, ngtel a minimum el ngai engro lu.
Segida diaku degliye, mister president, emtebegal, tebegal diu rises tiga da askara adal la al adibedem sa. Esel gumeset tiang eng wal base se action el mora la.
Okay.
Wal base se action el mora la, sel twenty-one. And sebel dibska ga, nganiya question el momreg edin, mister Mario edik askara adal la bil mem.
Kabonge, senatorina.
No, mister president, awa sel twenty-one otari. Eng wasa offensive human smuggling. Eh wasa sentence serngi ya, upon conviction thereof shall be fined not more than twenty-five thousand dollars and imprisoned not less than ten years. Not less than two, not less than one year or more than ten years. Mang, and offenses aggravated human smuggling, in, a conviction thereof shall be fined not more than fifty thousand dollars and imprisoned not less than five years or more than fifteen years.
Aykan mora logal ma foreigner?
Adha. Ayka, ya su mang aggravated, balduk lai ka hidal sentence, ngani sel eh offensive trafficking in children, ya fine shall not be more than five hundred thousand dollars and imprisoned for not less than five years or more than twenty-five years.
Okay.
Mang, mang ngariya seven hundred fifty thousand ma ten years, ma fifty years. Ayka amalimis el, el maringa eh away al giridel morula to satisfy segidel, sen ngaraklili, senatoris al giridel mo altira.
Tel tirto requirement. Ma ygen requirement ra tirto, ay gal eh, ah klimotela raal dagal busse ma faena. Mang sebel adar belau di regal di surva tuir semruha ra blu seletu. Dioshisiu mora adar ogu il ngara, human trafficking, eh senatoris al.
Agume se hoy a proposer, rigid, el logiwa, onktil amdegel meridil, ra gel seven, seven or fourteen tel al recommendation. Ndi ya ulakasel katmo klemi, edo murasi regal wedding, eh mister amendment. I for one, I would like to see those, those uh field, way gidla lula inabol, asing morgia, morgia, om adar belau, eng wuk ngariya, leka, madar bela dikker belau, ndika adu ba shel morgi. Nga bom da rengel, ledokir kaur mora blu la, bu morgi. Mang giridel msa, atela adar belau, to melia makit eh, koka double sel, ekker abulwal free as anybody else. Ndi wey sil nga report, ay gal tora human trafficking, ayka omur outside, digal kin spin. Digal da rengel. Ngariya ududir, eh teg advantage. Tir gel kotu ri nu krera banglades, ma Philippine in the past, na si sentra adal may. Ela undocumented, malu betemel touristet, sen savab ingi mo yor. Ay yegid ya part, tegid whole system. Mang ya, kedu mora do it wedding, kedu discussion eh, shkuma gel, sel amendment ta inabom ngai. Eng asa bel further look at it, kupu mora baby, digal fine, digal, adal din imol tetalela human smuggling, malu ben human trafficking. Ndi ngariya gel wuk, children smuggling and children human trafficking, esel mal makit ringi, ay gal involve prostitution. Nga adil, human trafficking orior. Prostitution. Diaya part, tel human trafficking, tutira, ngariya ngal, dvi, mutesal, bu tarabashio. It sells them for sex. That's where the money is. Besides just labor. Ngara, adra shares, et adra kara, so. Yeah. Ongila agri me, mister president, eh mang ndi kedu, hopefully kedu, amitki mo omes serngi, eh omes ay yegid el amendment, tel asig, kedu modistinguis, tel asing ngara adar belau, ban mututak le ngora, loval se ngora, ta adra adu. Ndi, reklamest serngi ra, adra adu, blul da rengel, mel gal misa adar belau, mo da rengel. Sen tarai isiu. Ndi yegal adar belau, ha ra bluwa de, wuk ngari tegel ngamogala, audou, demtemo one fast money, with audenkin twice. Later time, eh demtutak, wa yegid, eh man mota, bastirir. Ay yegid responsibility tingi, as leaders, nomes ay yegi, de balance.
Ok, senator Mario.
Om sulap, president, aktriragul gora, segida lusod ringa, inaboktriragul, mes serngi. Gumeset tiang, ngalgeidel butokol, ngara ngabal, ngari tegel to malala. Talisertir, mrogo di portel til merbela. Akasakral di regal, sebel lo yar tiang, instedra, mogo luvlu, siala, dedu kua set. Tilharay gel kiasel penalty ngi, eh di portel ngi. La gal lutel mora gora, teleng, omda segida la bayla, sebel dugutmakli, nding aktriral mal gonger, wa se du, seel may ta, seel wedding, ndidu badu wedding, lutel man momil, eh mes ay yegel wuk motletal, mora adar belau, mora adu. Deve, prasese president, ngari tegel adu, blul, dimel, mokan binsa, imorar, rubak, wa se. Akmu adam lemme, ndiha marangidil ngara, akmu adam lemme, omorul le gora. Ndinga dingil, lo siga ududel eh, emrael lo urure dingil haral, wa taktul mana. Se diri ngari ngi, to asen, na, ndin diri ngari ngi, maral, diri ngari tegel omu dor, til wa se tiu dra. Magu mara, wa se yegid, adi regal, ave bir, agidel mo, oru yalla, el mo protectet, tir gel adad, lun muay se yegid. Ma yegid el teleta, el mandiha bul, ngal, ngal adha bayme, mo, bay mo, babtulul, mo, o speer, ngal adar belau, el morula yegel sorra, el se la blu bela eh. Ediha, eh ngal, bayurin ngal adal, lo banklela, awa ngiya omongit, tel wa se ngiya amle, ngilulme, dimnagalu, ngiya omel. Magu, se yegid, agidel omu taklen, di regal, na gal soru lil, moturukli, adad, ma ngiya dimnagal, mo ktega ngiya, amru se yegid. Ay yegid, la, ongil bodu, mes ed mal, omu takl, mo, blu takl, msel, lo, mangalna, el bol sebel, ngani yegid. Sulat chairman, na, omda se yegid, la, ongil bodu, misra, dur wedding, eh, del lutel.
Sulan. Senator Udim.
Sali, mister president, omkob sesne. Eh chairman, sari, komiti, kublo momis, sena tegel kingpin principle. Ya gumeset tiang, eh, komiti report, mora adal abileng, ndi otia, se sel principal ra kingpin, aseng adal leader, ya yegid, kola ma, makitlom ruleng. Mang akusigal legal definition ringi, tel adal abil, elat tiang, base sel definition, ra adal criminal, el mora, se tiang la. Sil bomis, ra page nine of sixteen, eh, of course, reflecte ra report. Sel omda sen kingpin, tiang base sel labor, el ma criminal, se yegel prove terse, tragaya leader, gal, lo morula, dang, sebel dimut, kula se, ngidi, la, adri involve ra yega, lo tutak, la, se, adri, responsiwa ra yega lo morul, ama obra double sel, ra adal tut, ra adal bay, lo involvi, otutak, otutak, klinger, wa ring leader, ti.
Sel, sel page tel, ngari di sel kin spin.
Se page nine ra,
Eleven.
Al adal abil, ra, kingpin principle eh.
Page tel.
Ra page nine.
Ra report.
Ra, ngala report, ngal uk, ndisel, brambal, blutakla, ngala page nine.
Report, page tel.
Ra report.
Fourteen. Al suguma nga, report, se action twenty-one, twenty, my understanding, asing base se action, el mosohis, va tal, seventeen PNC, tel. Ndi ta, men ta seventeen PNC. Eh, ma suguman, diha, adal abil, and something that we get the correct thingi. Al suguma nga, report, ngara title, ngara approvition, eh giril, so apra, adal abil, mosse, eh, reflecte ra PNC code. So, thank you for that.
Ya, mister president, ya, mister chairman, ngak, ngal, sel adal abil, ndikno siga definition ringi, amor, clarify the definition ringi, adal abil. Ndi diha, dioshisiu, tel ngal komiti report, wa adal abil. La adre, gundas, ndre, kungil, eh, hans ringi, eh, sel general definition, eng wasa kingpin, ta tragay, tragay lead. Ya gundas, abor dona proof, adre kal, mga momring, na, suma adad, involver ngiye. El du, la, sel omu ketuk, ngaseng yegid ya kingpin, el bo, ra la gautal ak. Gundas, la, adre kal, require a mutu, more legal definition, more clarified definition, magu, nitro.
Gumeset sel page sixteen, ra under twenty-one, twenty, ra eight. Eh, segida purpose ra, eh, pulwa se, the old era, gula, finds that the most serious cases of human trafficking or smuggling worldwide are orchestrated by international criminal conspiracies led by individuals to be known in this section as kin spin. Muntir ga yegid, da rengel, adad, ha ra outside. Criminals, ma ngara, malsum, nganiya definition, mal necessary, mutu loval moe, mutu, mos misi eh, then maybe we can ask our legal counsel to look at it. They mutu define the ringi. Ndi gora mal, domain clear, tal, se, petilo se action, asitke, the intention, la. Al suguma kawa, the individual, eh, bedu, ay ka yegid, da rengel, eh, regardless of the degree, kau ya kin spin. Either children or human trafficking or human smuggling. You, palu, wuk ha ra prostitute, ah, prostitute for you. You're the kin spin, and gora di, no tak, to, we know what kin spin is, right? So, we will just equate, digal da rengel, adad, ha, human smuggling, ma human trafficking, asikawa, di wangal, adra, adra, x, ngal, adra colombial, adra cocaine, malu, wuk, adra, ha. You're the kin spin. Sulan.
Okay, oh, kabong.
Ya, sulam, mister president, akram, askara legal clarification, eh. Na, normally, ah, oksel, obviously, no sen ring leader, malu ben. Akti, sadi, se yegid, lengwa, akmo, kangestera mutu, bebe, ta, taipra criminal. Allegado, magani se yegid, ma chairman, mutu, mo trakclarifying, eh, sulan.
Digan od. Eh, senator, homosexual for underangral section of human trafficking. Homosexual.
Pablo, president, eh, mayra PNC, as eleven PNC. Elat tiang,
Sebel, dhoradu, do wedding, sebel, dhoradu, do wedding, kudlo yang.
Well, al suguman, diha, illegal, homosexual, itirin, diha, lud, ngara penalty lud, buhul, di galil, na, sebel, malu, ben, base la. Diha, galil, bay, bel, buhak, ngan. Se, sexes, marriage.
Okay. Sugum, ndigan eh, tir gel gonger, tal standing komiti report eleven dash one forty-one, aldoo hoy. Om tok, namai, floor leader.
Oh yeah, mister president, kada, mal, 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 diha, komiti reporting, ma, move, ma da, adapt, standing komiti report eleven dash one forty-two, yang akukire la senate resolution eleven dash ninety-four.
Se la mushun, namdu, eh, se, ngabodon, tirat chairman, ra, banking, bol riski da report. Senator Aldewen.
President, sata ti alim, ah, komiti, kara, banking, insurance, and other financial matters, amle, ngilongra, mo, om sube, me report, ter sel senate resolution eleven dash ninety-four. El ngi amo confirm a presidential reappointment, ra mister Kevin Masablu. El mosu, bl, adal abod, ra financial institutions commission for a term of two years. Komiti, kaba, mister president, amno, om sube, tal, al nomination, ra mister Masablu, malmo, ot, em, no mu, lo mes, sel resume ringi, lo mes, ah, credentials serngi, ma qualification ringi, em, nomtiga, klasen, mister Masablu. Amal well qualified, el mosu, bl, mo dar, tal, governing board, ra financial institutions commission. Karubak, amle, earned, bachelor degree, ringi, ra international business and management from Ming Chuan University, Abla Taiwan. O, se, se, tam, el ngan, Abla Taiwan, ndirek, me earned, sel, dadu, laseng proficiency certificate in Mandarin Chinese. Amal, sebel, menga, du, Mandarin Chinese fluent, ra National Taiwan Normal University. In addition, el giril, ah, credential, ra mister Masablu, ah, komiti, nomtiga, klasengal, mister Masablu, ah, direk, la, complete, ah, abetokol, bringa training, ma workshop, ah, giril, ka karosel disciplines, eh, etas, del sponsor, nature conservancy, ma protected area networks fund, conservation strategy fund, mal mutu bebe. Nganga, direk, me earn a accreditation as a investment fiduciary uh, within AIF, as sel, de, 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 se accredited investment fiduciary. Yang, ah, atara yegel kora certificate, malu ben training, el dungu, sel boda, adala, yegel, yegidel kora fiduciary uh, board, ma, luben trustees. Mang, ngia, el, el, tegidel, ogi, tegidel certificate, eng sebel, wa, the, tuira, aklaseng, lamom da rengel, yegel, ngal, lela, adal nga, yegid, drual, ngia, direk, mo kangestera, to, ra public funds. Uh, ultuira work experience, ra, uh, mister Masablu, nganga, amna, aulumu, ra, career ringi, direk, me poteng, lo, dala, commercial, lo, commercial loan, or analyst, na National Development Bank, da, ra blu bela. Eh, direk, lo, program manager, sel, dadu, laseng, ngardok, nature, nature reserve. Eh, direk, lo, director, Bureau of Tourism, under Ministry of Natural Resources, Environment and Tourism. Ta, sel tam, la, paligar gid, ra, minis, uh, uh, atakal sangwa, amle, minister, tegidel ministry. Uh, komiti, direk, nomtiga, ah, mister Masablu, direk, mal, active member, community, ma, abetokol organization within state. Uh, mang, uldu, uldu, konya, uldu, konya, Alliance of Conservation Officers, Association of State Plan Coordinators, eh, direk, me, eh, member, Malgaoq, He Star Policy Council. Nganga, direk, mal, active member, community, ra, Bla, Malgaoq, Malgaoq State, uh, lowventra leaders, tel state, ra, Malgaoq. El masal, atora, social development, investment, may yegel wuk bebe, ra, atol, giril, ogu, ogu, rulil, ah, geisai. Komiti, ulduro, la, milu, sel mora, mister Masablu, eh, dimnuto, sel, wal, war, lo, taipor, sel, ngak, ngar se, mister Masablu. El, komiti, milu, sel morgil, lo, nganiya questioner, el belse, yegel kora standard, el question, sel, de, eska, tiridel mo, oh, nominate, el mora, yegal board. Eh, direk, lo, se, se, tam, komiti, amle, ganda, trahiding, uh, lobengel, ngal, rubak. El, direk, lo, mutu, mutu, lo mes, yegel qualifications serngi, may yegel eh, experience serngi, ngal, eh, direk, na, adal, tal, board, yegal, lamom regel, el tul terms. Eh, direk, lo, mes, sel, wuk, wala, sangel, ma perspective, ringi, giril, tal, el, FIC. Uh, na, se yegid, confirmation hearing, eh, uh, mister Masablu, amle, respond, giril, sel question, klaseng, nganiya, mal, mal, nganiya, komitment ringi. El mal, willing, el mo kame, el mosu, bl, sel full term, tel appointment, eh, president, tam, ne, appoint, ringi, giril. Eh, luluai, sel, ma komiti, klaseng, diha, medical, malu, ben, kora, ah, physical condition, ringi, lo, abol limit, ability, ringi, lo, matmukla, ngal, le, tal, orior. Eh, direk, luluai, se, klaseng, diha, kora, angan ngil, so, bay, ngi, malu, ben, kora, financial dealing, serngi, lo, abol, sebel, mo, ulen, nganiya, conflict, ringi, giril, ah, tal, ngara, FIC. Uh, mister Masablu, ah, direk, luluai, sel komiti, klaseng, la, altam, ndiha, ang, di tal, Malgaoq Nature uh, Reserve Board, se, ah, ah, la, adal, wa, na, la, adal, outside, tal, tegidel FIC, li, direk, la, la, dal. Uh, mister Masablu, ah, direk, el, el, ulgi, tal, tam, ra, hearing, nguluai, se, klaseng, um, wablo, bakatak, yegel, ngar, le, tal, al, al FIC, yegal, ultu, yegel, lamom regel, experience serngi, lo, omu, tekrik, klaseng, tal, al, al FIC, amal, mal, 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 uh, la, uru, lo, bangela, FIU, sel, one component unit, tal, al, commission. Eh, lo mes, ay yegel, nganiya, uldu, das, sel, legislate, mo, la, malu, ben, proposal policy, giril, atora, financial sector, ma banking sector. Eh, eh, attribute, logiwa, yegel, kamen, ta, malu, ben, input, tal, giril, ah, ay yegid, el formulation, ay yegid, el, el, uldu, das, policy, malu, ben, ngan, uldu, samola. Uh, mister Masablu, ah, direk, me informa komiti, klaseng, ah, rura, ah, ay yegel wuk, tam, la, uru, lo, bangela, Malgaoq State Government, Community Conservation, may yegel, wuk, to, investment, ma finance. Eh, eh, tegidel appointment, ringi, lo, al, bilsang, ah, ah, sel, one confidential, ringi, malu, ben, ability, ringi, mo, sebel, kaftablin, sel, bl, tegidel appointment, ringi, el mort, ya yegid, el board, FIC. Mang, gaw, lo mu, lo, mo, o, dal, tal, FIC, ah, amlam, momreg, a tul, term, tul, two years term, la, appoint, ringi, mort, ya. Mang, mu, lo, el, merugi, eh, se yegid, el tam, na, kot, el, mo, appoint, el mort, tal, board. Eh, lo, drua, yegid, el, to, kora, workshop, ma training, wa, blul, sebel, equip, ringi, eh, build, eh, capacity, ringi, mo, sebel, el, geri, ona, ngar, le, tal, el board. Uh, especially, yegel, training, il, wa, blom, kora, am, sa, del, giril, ah, ah, to, kora, know your customers, ma asset to debt ratio, ay yegid, awa, kora, ah, bebe, ah, amklo, tutel, training, am, lo, mora, wa, itirgal, eh, ngar, yegid, el board. Mo, sebel, el, fullit, dugutmakla, ngar, yegid, el, tegidel, board, FIC. Ma, komiti, ah, lo mes, ay yegid, eh, man, lo, om, tig, klaseng, tal, multu, sel, el, one education, ma experience. May yegel, wuk, lamom regel, tam, la, adala, aboard, FIC. Eh, mal, 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 qualify, komiti, mal, mal, lo, omrak, klaseng, mal, mal, sel, sebel, qualify, el mosu, bl, another, two terms. Mister, Masablu, ah, direk, me express, mera komiti, eh, klaseng, during the course of his tenure with FIC, ma FIU. Eh, direk, lo, wuk, pl, encounter, yegel, make close challenges, bebe, na, make close challenges. Uh, including, sel, turnover, tir gel key staff, one, ra, key staff. Nga, ah, wuk, no, regel, orior. Uh, eh, no, temlo face, sel challenge, ra, mosi, gra, mo replacement, ringi. Ling, kara, wa, yegid, el drual, tal, sel, position, executive, executive commissioner. Eh, direk, mal, giril, ultuira, adal, nganiya, aklo, klegay, ngari ngi, ma experience, manalit, serngi, tal, industry, atora, banking industry. Nga yegid, el, no, regel, adri, ra, uh, mister Masablu, ah, wa, se, klaseng, tar, ah, if not, ah, wa, the top, malu, ben, most trained, el, from the region. Nga, lo, bangela, FIC, eh, unfortunately, ling, wuk, no, nganiya, lamu, ulen, no, regel, dal, tal, eh, mani, ngara, management, timet, tegidel, FIC. Uh, mister Masablu, ah, mal, lula, otia, komitment, ringik, klaseng, mo, mal, mal, make sure, FIC, ma, if, ulu, lo, bangela, FIU, ah, continue, ah, lo, siga, ah, amo, wal, lo, temer, yegel, tir yegid, key, management, uh, position, eti. Mo, mo, har, uh, to, mo, continue, lo, siga, adal, mo, o, fil, tegid, position. Eh, direk, el, aknalit, klaseng, wal, ultuira, angal, sangasela, uh, ra, adal, qualify, el mora, yegid, el position, etamal, el, wakora, face, se yegid, challenge, eh, continue, orior, lo, bangela, leadership. Ma, yegel wuk, partner, uh, uh, agencies, sel, la, dal, orior. Eh, mosse, il, lo, adi, se yegid, el appointment, ra, yegel wuk, mo, onex, el, executive commissioner. Um, tal, position, executive commissioner, mister president, uh, members, ra komiti, la, hearing, especially, uh, uh, senatorina, bo, amal, me emphasize, ringik, klaseng, mal, klo, tutel, la, da, meri, edel, el fil, tal, position, executive commissioner. Ling, diha, so, adal, masa aboard, el continue, wal, manage, lo, lo, ru, ngar, le, la, aboard. O, se, se, tam, eh, to, manage, ra, ah, tal, agency. Ling, klo, tutel, nganiya, se yegid, el, wakora, da, ah, separation, ra power, malu, ben, separation, ra, ngar, le, ngi, ah, make sure, eh, diha, yegid, el wakol, el, kora, ta, conflict, ra, ngar, le, la, adal, ti, ra, ngar, alsel, tal, program, ra, Financial Institutions Commission. Se yegid, ah, mister Masablu, ah, amal, me assure, ah, ah, uh, komiti, klaseng, mo, rul, lo, ventra, aboard, ma, tir gel, nganiya, staff, eh, eh, motra, expadite, ra, hiring, malu, ben, appointment, eh, yegid, el mo, next, el, el, mo, dal, tal, mo, manage, uh, commissioner, tal, industry. Mang, ultuira, yegid, mister president, eh, Mang ultu ra ay gide l, Mr. President, eh ma committee mal. Uh, l'ngitra support tra Senate. Eh recommend uh adoption or tal Senate Resolution eleven dash ninety four. Ra la ngaralil la Senate.
Ram swila, sir. Sula ngay Senator Aldabeyano. Tigil gerogol, konger tal standing committee report eleven dash one forty two. Girela Masabul mo oh dal tal F I C board dooi. Om tok, namai, flow leader.
President, talabasek damna, rogiusel guk reporting ra committee, se diaa gangana special committee reports. Guk podiul morsel order of the day. Eh diaa gangana unfinished business. Obera debora bilgalender, Mr. President, eh didon tir short recess.
Short recess. Tul mgodonges session, rgi del bora order, flow leader.
President, kada kada mlara sel item eleven. Bilgalender eh mlara. Uh, netika short recess, me la kada mutu resume, kada ngara first reading. Ma uh move the passa first reading, Senate bill eleven dash seventy five.
Sekida motion, namdungesegna, podon tir introduciert tal bill, ma bolbaskida omso del. Senator Inavo.
Um sula ngay, Mr. President. Uh, mal merang sugirtigel go introduceer sel no magi. Eh introduceer tal luldasamola. Um, Senator Rudim, Senator Isan, Senator Talwal, ma Senator Sungino. Eh President, tal luldasamola, uh mo utrail marrobra. Uh, ngasaklila aral alu. Eh direktal, al sugum, nganiya ngasaklila aral alu, le ngalakar se gide l wayal. Gora akcap. Eh ngakabalmenta sebel al may gide l access ludow, demerongi. Eh may mo oh return al mora adel l'ma ra alu. Ma kutluuli, President, eh tia wasaya olbi ra lula wa. Uh, mesangal wasing malimisel maring la aral alu eh. Eh eh olbi ra lula, direktal l'as wasing mal kloa profit ra. Ay gal kumbali ra alu. Mang akme distribute documents. Etengel luldasamola, amal mokatatangal gora uh. Tomdas serini wasing magarama, as Senator Ahitaya, sangatang, amne toko l propose a bill. Anding dimla hal sapetel, mesangal wasa kada magarangemo. Oh, gora akcap persel wasing magarangestoparal alu ol malamya klo. Ma kutlu ulen, ak ak misangile Congressman San Nicolas. Eh gangam ne introduce ra la ra el mo akcap persel dadul wasing. Um, profit ra ay gahidale eh oil companies. Mang sel domesengal oil companies, emral patoaw du del billions of profits, mora egal. Mang sebel ditaraki ngara ogol mal percenta uh additional profits sel tir a ang may. Mang nganiya gil video ringi, mang ngalsuman swadalo mesi se edel mesang. Mang ngani sel April four twenty twenty two press release, eh l'nye amil sadal wasing. Uh, a thirty percent awayal reasonable al al cap persel margin. A margin abalgulakka se uh sel ludow dal motungi, kawa oturur alu, otungi. Eh l'nye ngalakar sel cost ra uh obatel alu ol mo ol may. Ma cost ra alu ol maya sel aral aral, aral ma freight serni. May girogul tax serni, eh morbebul sel alu. Eh tiram o eder sel margin artir. Se gide l margin artir awayal aldul wasing sebel al thirty percent. Anding tal losadar ngiyah, guk apply mora guam. Gida mokali ngar guam, el wholesaler, ma retailer, adios isiu. Le mobile otungi alu eh at the same time ito gas station artir ultra alu. Ndikalwa bela ol eh importer otungi alu. Eh deneng guk oturur al mora, a gas station, al guk motel, guk motel kumbali, eh guk oltra alu. Mang, sel domeser ni lo saodar ngi, wasa thirty percenta. Um, amal inafal pay girogul el margin, eh mal profitable egal oil companies. Se gida uli, President, eh tal luldasamola, wasaya. Kada cap per se gide l margin at thirty percent. Eh se gide l findings, wasaya, um sel dil makasay al kumbali. Wadil tablol kumbalia ultu alu. Eh, ndikal sapetel mal mesang, uh, al wasing, ndika competition. Sebel mo tarandire, setra aral eh, diaa diaa rolere gide, desangal wasing. Mang mal wangarangal klungela uh price artir. Uh, additional el profit al mortir. Amle telal gi mit artir, mang malu sawa biel mortir. Mang ay gide l responseera, ay gil tool oil companies, erseral gotel startel marela alu, mal morba paral. Kati direktal mesangal wasey, sel la tiampa aral a crude oil. Eh emral meredan masa aral uh alu ra fuel pump. Ndi sel guk al drapa fuel oil, aral a crude oil. Eh sel domesera uh a pump price, eh mal meyodal memtengal. Mang, um, economist refer to this wasing. Eh tal aral alu awaya rockets and feathers. Sel oral moraba, ndiwa rocket. Ndi sel oral merio, yang gora, sel a arm, maguagil. Al float ra, eh ultel mal meyodal mal merio, so. Um, ma tal luldasamola eh President. Uh, wasa kada cap ra margin ra alu ra import thirty percent. Ma sel reseller, direktal da cap per ngira thirty percent. Estyle tiam mal klo ludow deleng, sel sugumga waya example, kada. Uh, total fuel cost three dollars per gallon. Ya do ya omua additional thirty percent al margin or ya ringi. Eh tenamo three dollars and ninety cents per gallon, langmasa ninety cents. Yal sugum, ngel gas station amaralal three ninety. Eh merongi ndir allow the margin uh uh thirty percent. Eh tedi direktal masal mo five dollars and seven cents. Mang, mbalgulak, malasing, in total, they're getting like a seventy percent profit margin. Or tal alu uh after a cost serni. Mang, tigil mechanism, angat tal proposal, la blel pasar ngi, Congress ra mregel. Eh direktal mo apply mora guam. Ling, it's the only mechanism, sel sapetel, sel peringi, sel sapetel mesang, uh aral alu sel belt two. Uh, with the change in the tax law, eh namo sebel mesang, ah before, endangasi emmesang. Le before ya aral alu, tax ra alu adi five cents per gallon. Ma sel lamea invoice ra alu, endik malasaggingila ya. Maybe seven million gallons al alu ol may. Let the dipper of five cents, ndikal report, tangi dil ngaral, ndikal require a tax law. But with P G S T, eh girel mo ol ol takmalasim, mang agimle, mararal alu ol te lang. Eh, makimla o kordil tila aral, emang te langal tax serni, ay gibong. Ping la change se se gide l pricing mechanism serni, eh mo sapetel mesa. Sebel, sebel lo ol tigay gide l detail, emang sebel, namo sebel wasaya thirty percenta the cap per ni. Ma tal luldasamola eh President, eh adimlas mal wasey. Bol sapetel, namo sebel masa aral alu, with a new tax law. Mal bol sapetel cap ra margin serni ra thirty percent. Eh tida tal gibel eh eh holdera aral alu. Mal sebel ngosuira, gaysay, ay gide l mutl recover. Mat tal luldasamola, amo apply al mora fuel importer, ma gas station reseller. Anding, al sugumga, kadi ol tarawa five thousand gallons el merio, ndikal bul apply mora. Mal sugumga ultra alu ra outlying states, ndikal bul apply mora. Eh eh tia provide for uh rebate ra aral alu. Mal sugumansama mal malaya, al sugum, nganiya ay gide l access. Ya tax office, mo sebel, l'mesang sel aral alu ol met mo. Eh eh mesang aral alu ol blel la charge serni, mal sugum, ngexida na thirty percent. Eh sapetel, l'askal was, eh sapetel, eh sapetel. El access ra akmala singiril pera, te langal mora uh uh kabalment. Eh se gide kabalmenta mongu eh eh ulmas trira, aratal l'ma ra alu. Mang sapemel, il file ra tax refund requestera kau. Eh sel la to, se gide l wasing, amle te langa, ay gil access, uh thirty percent. Mang, akundaset ya kura kultangal, dondas serni, luldasamola, anding. I think we came up with this ideal, basically ay gide l guk other ways. Eh direktal uh, el balurak guam, direktal trial control alu, lo lospero, sisiu al mechanism. Ma se gide luldasamola, al trial, l'stop ra price increase ra aral alu. Directal mo controla mal excessive profits ra ay gal fuel companies. Sula ngay, Mr. President, eh se gide ya.
Kahali, digu girel Senator Inavo. El ay gal tablol kumbali ngarbelol, mala lu, mala rgeel, mala raguam?
Mala raguam.
Mang, kado m'arraguam, ngakanu kado mala ra Singapore?
Ngara klotangger, maraguami, ngara gyalil coastal tanker, mira blubelam.
Mela ikad ya dollar ra Singapore, kado kado m'arayal alu, rgi del raguam?
Way sel, ndika, ay gil, may gyalil coastal tanker, al adi al sapetel, mala ra.
Okay, melagida waya, bang sel dollar ngiraguami, it's already tax, the US tax, eh, mang increase emer git.
Ndia kan di transit, eh President.
Ndia, ndi kadi sele turada bela mregel, ndiaga blol taxer, wera al may?
Ndia kan di transit raport. Diwaya kar gorgidl ngara Singapore.
Oh di transit, mandiaga tax.
Di transit, oh.
Okay. Senator Mario.
Sula eh President, akdirel mal guam, no staff amral digol waset ya, m'garra, ngil bilak, mal dirugukam ne. Dusweal waset ya, m'garra, eh muut muclim, mal oengar ra. Ah Inavo, namo sebel li tiaotobdi, memorinyadiskasyon. La kora, diomeser ni, eh la. Sel elakwaset tal taxer el ala may. Sel may gal alu, eh tal taxer ni, raport, mandiaga, el altay, eh tal aral alu, adi change. Ay gil may mutmula, tanga, mergo sel guk chens, ah magitra blul, adi guk chens, aral alu. Mta gide l, tiaq ni, morba be merio. Melasegi, elakwasadel mumsalo, asegademgrabo, the process se gide l, tle tay, eh gide l. Gide ma egal oil companies ra. Ningela, sel tigil ulfa, sel five cents, sel tal. Sel loturutir, uh, loya sel five cents per gallon al tax. Ndi tal aral alu, di mas, sel ngasra blulad, m'ngangmasa, ukrabtra blulad, eh, ndiaga rebtrigid. Ay gai gide, ya kora soadel momesel, asegademgrabo, the treaters se gide. Tal vesel tax waset, ta sel may, tal tax serni, mang namo diaga sebel mutu chens, ay gal aral alu, ngara tangga. Se gida kora soadel momenngali, eh, guk process, eh, tiga kora follow, ay gil tle tara, ay gal oil companies. Sula President.
Senator Inavo.
Eh eh President, eh tigida kora uh osengela, eh amle, eh ki momeser niye. Ndewaya, sel, el altay, eh import tax ra alu, uh five cents per gallon. Ma sel lamea, BLT, adikmalasagulaba, let's say ten million gallons, agimulabl may. Mata uh the, tonga tangger, eh me alongside, eh merongi, wa seven million al may. Ndi se gide l seven million, adi aldo ngali aral. Mang, every time, la change, market price, eh, the change ra aral, tal kala, ling, kita, adi aldo ngali aral. Ndi elal bol change a tax law, ngiril, sel may be, eh, ngasay, ngahaulaba, ten million gallons el may. Eh akmil aral ra Singapore, three dollars per gallon. Eh amle tela, ol ngila tangger, eh amle tela uh a tax ra. Uh bela, eh amle, eh tela taxer bela. Eh eh, ya before, etta di l'olia five cents, eh mor wasel ol tarawar ngil mora P U C. Mal ubetol ol tarawar ngil mora uh, uh gas station. Eh the charge ra four percent, ling, girel pera, G R T, mora kabalment. Mang, el angalbo, the change, sel m'la mo, sebel, l'mesangal wasing, amle tela aral alal may. Eh eh, eda ay girogul costel ra tax, ma ngarar ngi. Eh merongi, sel, mbalgula, yasugum, tigil la, amo urior. Eh dimo waya alu ra P U C, sel laboraya, tangray malig. Al sugum, amle, uh, let's say, usually, they deliver like thirty million gallons, mora tangray malig. Eh sel alu, adios isiu, aral, dimerkobol, magim, tigil thirty million. Mang, wayal, eh, giretal eh, ay gal inventory pricing, alva first in, first out. Tam a price pricing or something. Ay girel kabalment, tal mo sebel follow, sel, mang, eh girela price artir, eh make sure, eh se gide l cost artir. Adi thirty percenta margin artir. Eh sugum, tamol, oh, tamol, ol tirak, ra price ra blulad, eh mo ngalakra thirty percent. Eh girel, ngusel, amle, ngalakra thirty percent, tal ulmasang kabalment. Mang, waya, toko ra change, eh tal mechanism, uh, wasey. Uh alu, adi, amle, diga ngara tangga, eh amle three dollars per gallon. Mang, girel di three dollars, eh, dimerkolbo, la ay gil guk, amle, eh, to guk change a aral, eh, sel nextel segmental may. So, but, um, se gida, tomdas, when mo oh urior el way say. Yakabalmenta, girel follow, sel aral alu, at least a P E A, yang aralil sel direkt.
Kamul mul, Mr. Senator.
Diaa mal ngil, ma, sel mal ngil, luldasel mal, uh, mal ngil, awol way say gide. Akpi, gala, eh la, ay gal oil companies, afalo, ay gil aral alu, awol, manadiaga. Sel mete di m'larat, tal amantra alu, lungu, ya se, tigida alu, gimilu, mta gida. Se etir, ol tirak, rta alu, ra bekelsil, sera change ra blulad. Ling, sebel, sugum, kado uh, murtila, se sel mete la aral alu. Eh sebel alu, lo tungil, se dar tagaya alu. Mto tungil, atangal, monmon, guk ma riyo, aral alu, me lasegi, eh, eh, di gyal, dirga, kalmetangger. Ay gida, stakar, tal ngarabab, aral alu. Mang, asegi, dia direktal, ngil, bodo tal mal, ngil, mesangel, subi, edo uru lo bangela, ay gal oil companies. Ling, ngila, ngila, bodo, m'ral, bodo, setra capra, ay gal, sebel, ay gal kumbalibutmuk. Ling, ding, girel, mo, magal uru, le tiga, ay giri, gide l bulgol, wasin. Tonga alu, le atang, eh, ding, sel tol tirak, rta tal aral alu ra blulad. Mang, kodo kora, ngar segi, wasin, mahital mol mol, eh, lo, mlarababa, aral alu, eh, dasstakar, se gide. Eh blalbore, aral alu, gide l, mol, ngar sel, gide l, ngarabab, aral alu. Ngila, asegi, mal, ngil, eh President, ay gil, di kan, sur, makdikmu. Eh tiam, rasegri, ding, bol sebel, mal, mom, se gide, rta, muk, ngil, tiam, mal, mongusuira blurbelam, sula.
Senator Cortez.
Sula eh President, uh, senators, uh, tia ora first reading, di. Tu l'era, introduciere, wasay, Maria Tellemo, uh, withel, basin sel profit margin. Uh, sumo se gide, President, eh direktal dilbora, ay gal wasemaving, Maria possibility, gide l. Create a national oil company, at least di the pera, ten percent of the distributor, ne blubelam, sula.
Senator Shobong.
President, uh, mal, namasulela, introduceer, m'gatald, eh, omnasutang, eh, mal. Eh kosel, naldele, uh, Senator Cortez, omnasing, uh, omnasabay. and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company including the creation of the company, maybe the company has a separate portal to regulate the company. And if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company on our behalf, the negotiator who has the PUC is the negotiator of the company, Mr. President. And if the question is, is it possible to compare the company's and if the company's company has the company's company hopefully, the company has something good to compare with. Mr. President.
Senator Inavo, I think the question is, is it possible to compare the company's and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the transit is not limited, and if the transit is not limited, and if the company's company has the company's company.
President, if the company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company.
No, I don't understand.
No, it is possible to compare it. And if the port is transferred to local coast, low-cost carrier tank.
Is it possible to compare the company's company to the company's company?
And if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the agreement is reached that the supplier does not get the company's company. So they have a supplier agreement that the company is the company. And the company is the company. And IPNE, a continual supplier of the company's company.
Okay, anyway, let's move on. I don't understand the company's company. Senator Mariur.
Senator Mariur, I think the question is, is it possible to compare transit fee? It is possible. And if the port fees are not limited, it is possible to compare transit fee. It is possible to compare the company. And if the company is Singaporean, the company is Singaporean. The company is a company. It is possible to compare the company's company to the company's company. And if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has petroleum corporation and if the company's company has the company's company and if the distributor has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company. And if the company's company has the company's company as I said, Senator Cortez, as I said, it is possible to compare it. If the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company.
Okay, anyway, the hearing is here. If you consider the company's company, find out the information. But if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company floor leader.
Mr. President, let's move on. First reading, the next reading, move the House first reading, House Bill 1168-7S-HD1.
Senator Inavo, let's clarify the title.
House Bill 1168-7S-HD1, Bill 13PNC, subsection 1334, to provide an additional criterion for non-resident workers to be eligible for employment by a second employer in the Republic of Palau. To amend 13PNC, subsection 1326, to increase the fees related to non-resident worker permits. To amend 13PNC, subsection 1357 and 58, to increase the penalties for violation of this title. The 13PNC, subsection 1334, so that if the non-resident workers are transferred to the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company. The 13PNC, subsection 1326, so that if the fees are not limited to non-resident workers. The 13PNC, subsection 1357 and 58, so that if the penalty is not limited, the Alu is not limited. The Alu is not limited.
Senator, the Alu is limited. And if the House bill, if the company's company has the Alu is limited. And if the company's company has the chairman of JGA. Floor leader.
Mr. President, I think the question is, is it possible to compare the first reading? Let's move on. The second reading. Move the second reading, Senate Bill 1173-SD1.
Senator Inavo, let's clarify the title. If the company's company has the Alu is limited. And if the company's company has the chairman. Senator Mariur.
I think the question is, is it possible to compare the company's and if the company's company has the company's company and if the schedule is not limited to the next session, to the next reading. If the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the amendment.
Mr. President. Mr. President, floor leader.
Mr. President, I think the question is, is it possible to compare the company's and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company Mr. President, I think the question is, is it possible to compare the bill calendar? It is not limited. It is possible to compare the resolution calendar. The referral, the House Joint Resolution 1139, that 10S, that approved execution of the loan agreement and related permission between ROP and Mega International Commercial Bank, Taiwan. And the loan of 20,000 barrels of fuel to activities of NDVP. And the House Joint Resolution 1127-6, SD1. It is not limited. And as I said, the resolution, the referral, the House Joint Resolution 1140-9S, that expresses appreciation of His Excellency Akira Kasawa, Ambassador Blas Yabal, and services company, Blue Bellow, who has 10 years of tenure. The House Joint Resolution 1141-9S, that encourages the creation of Palau-Japan Special Economic Agreement Commission. And will facilitate discussion and seek consensus on international agreement that strengthen economic relationship between Palau and Japan. If you consider the resolution, Mr. President, I think the company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company.
Senator, the House Joint Resolution 1195, it is not limited. Senator, let's clarify. And if the company's company has the company's company and if the House Joint Resolution expresses appreciation of Akira Kasawa, it is not limited. And it is to encourage the creation of Palau-Japan Special Economic Labor Office committee on Foreign Affairs. If you consider the question, Senator. Floor leader.
Mr. President, I think the instruction is that if the motion is suspended, the place of the House Joint Resolution 1140-9S is not limited.
Senator Inavo, let's clarify the title. And if the company's company has the company's company.
I think the question is, is it possible to compare the company's and if the last adoption calendar. So the 13PNC, subsection 1334, the House Court Resolution moved the draft of Senate Resolution 1186.
Senator Inavo, let's clarify. Let's clarify the title. Let's clarify the title.
Senator, Resolution Number 1186, set the resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Mr. Kenarit Lambs to serve as a member of the board of directors of the Palau Public Utilities Corporation for a term of four years. The resolution is not limited to the directorial, Mr. Kenarit Lambs, the board of directors of the PPUC, which is Ewara. The president of the Senate, the Quon's Pablo, is by request.
Senator Mariur.
Mr. President, I think the question is, is it possible to compare the company's and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company.
Senator, let's clarify the question. If the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the chairman. Floor leader.
Mr. President, the next resolution moved the draft of Senate Resolution 1194. Let's clarify the title.
Let's clarify the title.
Set the Resolution Number 1194, is a net resolution confirming the presidential reappointment of Mr. Kevin Musablu to serve as a member of the governing board of the Financial Institutions Commission for a term of two years. The Senate Resolution is not limited to the directorial, who is Mr. Kevin Musablu, the member of the governing board of the FIC, which is Ewara. The president of the Senate, the Quon's Pablo, is by request.
Senator Aldebay.
Mr. President, I think the question is, is it possible to compare the company's and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the question is not limited to the board. And if the question is suspended, let's clarify the title.
Senator Inavo, let's clarify the title. And if the company's company has the company's company. And if the company's company has the company's company. Floor leader.
The next resolution, Mr. President, moved the draft of Senate Resolution 1196.
Senator Inavo, let's clarify. If the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company.
Senator, Resolution Number 1196, set the resolution confirming the presidential appointment of Mr. Ngil Madala Rakh to serve as a member of the Palau Board for a term of three years. The Senate Resolution is not limited to the directorial, who is Mr. Ngil Madala Rakh, who is in Palau Board, Palau Board, which is Ewara. The president of the Senate, the Quon's Pablo, is by request.
Senator Raishan.
Mr. President, I think the president is and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the honor is not limited and if the title is not limited.
Senator Inavo, let's clarify. If the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company floor leader.
Mr. President, I think the question is, is it possible to compare the company's and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the company's company has the company's company and if the full confidence of the Senate is not limited, let's clarify the title. And the next resolution moved the draft of House Joint Resolution 1137-8S.
Let's clarify the title. Let's clarify the title.
House Joint Resolution Number 1137-8S, SD1. The House Joint Resolution to respectfully urge the president of the Republic of Palau to invite US companies and corporations to invest in the republic in order to increase economic diversification and strengthen the economy of the republic. The House Joint Resolution is not limited to Blue Bellow and invite the global media and the corporate sector to invest in Blue Bellow. The economy is not limited and the economy is not limited. The resolution is not limited until October when the House of Delegates will be admitted.
Let's clarify the title. If the House Joint Resolution, excuse me, 1137-8S is limited. And if the company's company has the company's company.
Mr. President, the first reading is SD1. The Senate is not limited to the SD1. The resolution moved the draft of the House Joint Resolution 1140-9S.
House Joint Resolution number 11.40.9S, the House Joint Resolution expressing our deepest appreciation to His Excellency Akira Karasawa, Ambassador Extraordinary and Plenty Potentiary of Japan to the Republic of Palau for his exemplary service in the Republic of Palau and recognition of his tireless work in strengthening, furthering the friendship between the Republic of Palau and Japan. The House Joint Resolution will declare Ambassador Karasawa, Ambassador Abdurrahshyabal, Palau as the ambassador of Palau. The Resolution will be delivered by Sabina Anastasio.
Is there a resolution that the Ambassador will give to the members of the Senate who will be in the Senate Quarter, the Vice Chairman, who will be in the House? Senator Quarter.
Mr. President, I would like to say that the Foreign Affairs Service is not going to be approved of the Joint Resolution. I would like to say that the assignment will be carried out by the President of the public. The resolution will be approved. The Ambassador of Palau, Abdurrahshyabal, has been told to withdraw the request. He has been told to withdraw. The president of Palau, Abdurrahshyabal, has been told to withdraw. He has been told to withdraw. He has been told to withdraw. The Ambassador, Akira Karasawa, has been appointed since August 2019. The Ambassador Extraordinary and Plenty Potentiary of Palau, Abdurrahshyabal, has been appointed. He has been appointed since August 2019. He has been appointed by the former President Tamir Mousaw. He has been appointed by the Ambassador of Palau. Ambassador Karasawa has been to Tokyo as a school. The Director General is the Secretary of the Omenet. Abdurrahshyabal is the Director General of the Agency. Ambassador Karasawa has been appointed as the Ambassador of Palau. He has been appointed. He has been told to withdraw. He has been told to withdraw. He has been told to withdraw. Ambassador Karasawa, who is the resident Ambassador of Palau, has been appointed since August 2019. He has been appointed by the government. He has been appointed by the other government. He has been appointed by the Royal. He has been appointed by the Royal. The Ambassador has been appointed since August 2019. He has been appointed by the Royal. He has been appointed by the Royal. He has been appointed by the Royal. He has been appointed since 2020. He has been appointed by the Submarine Cable Project since 2021. He has been appointed by the Involved by Renovation and Expansion by the National Airport since May 2022. He has been appointed by the Hospital September 2021. He has been appointed by the Health Screening since 1990. He has been appointed by the Royal. He has been appointed by the NCD Prevention. He has been appointed by the November 2021. He has been appointed by the Royal. He has been appointed by the Royal. He has been appointed by the Royal. He has been appointed since December 2021. He has been appointed by the Royal. He has been appointed by the Royal Project, the Maritime Domain. He has been appointed by the Royal. He has been appointed since January 2021. He has been appointed by the Goodwill, the Japanese Maritime Self-Defense Force. He has been appointed by the Royal. He has been appointed since September 2021. He has been appointed by the Royal. 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 He has been appointed since May 2022. He has been appointed by the Royal. He has been appointed by the Royal. He has been appointed by the disaster and climate resilience project. He has been appointed by the UNDP. He has been appointed by the emergency. He has been appointed since April 2019. He has been appointed by the Red Cross. He has been appointed by the warehouse. He has been appointed by the Red Cross. He has been appointed since December 2021. He has been appointed by the Royal. He has been appointed by the Royal memorandum of cooperation. He has been appointed since May 2021. He has been appointed by the online training. He has been appointed by the arm since February 2022. He has been appointed by the Royal. He has been appointed by the Royal. He has been appointed since April 2022. He has been supported by the human resource development. He has been assisted. He has been programmed by the Royal. He has been promoted by the Development Assistance Policy. He has been granted a grant in the Royal. He has been promoted by the Royal. Ambassador Karasawa has been appointed by the Royal. He has been appointed by the Royal. He has been interested by the Royal. He has been appointed by the House of Delegates. He has been appointed by the Senate. He has been appointed by the House. He has appreciated His Excellency Akira Karasawa, Ambassador Extraordinary and Plenty Potentiary of Palau. He has been appointed by the Royal. The House Joint Resolution will promote His Excellency Akira Karasawa, Ambassador Extraordinary and Plenty Potentiary of Palau, President of the Republic, His Excellency Sir Alan Wives Jr., President of the Republic of Palau, the Honorable Old Yes Ngirigalau, Chief Justice of the Supreme Court, Council of Chiefs, Governors Association, Organization of State Speakers, the Honorable Justice Paules, the President of the Senate, the 11th Deputy Director of Palau, the Honorable Sabina Anastasio, Speaker of the House of Delegates, the 11th Deputy Director of Palau. Mr. President.
Senator Quarter, I would like to say that the resolution has been approved by the Ambassador. I would like to say that I have heard that the resolution is approved. I am glad that you have been satisfied with the motion. Do you think the House can move on? I am talking. I am talking. Floor Leader.
Mr. President, I have heard that the resolution is not approved. I have heard that it is not approved. The House 15, the Ministry of Communications, 11.575, the Minister of Education, the HDLP Third Quarter Progress Report, the Palau Housing Authority. The Ministry of Communications, 11.576, the Mr. Kennedy, the Senator Isan, who has the exclusion of foreign nationals by the President. The Ministry of Communications, 11.577, the Mr. Marui, the Senate President, Paules, the fiscal year 2023, PNCC approved budget. The Ministry of Communications, 11.578, the FIB, the amendment application. The Ministry of Communications, 11.579, the Mr. Udui, the President, Paules, the civil service monthly investment account summary. The Ministry of Communications, 11.580, the Mr. Gumangai, the President, Paules, the United States Department of Agriculture, RUS Reganet Award, 17.01.861, the grant award of the PNCC. The Ministry of Communications, 11.581, the Mr. May, the President, Paules, the 80th Assembly Resolution Number 2101. The Ministry of Communications, 11.582, the Mr. May, the President, Paules, certified assembly resolution 2102. The Ministry of Communications, 11.583, the Minister Victor, the President, Paules, the Senate support for Ma'fee Agri Food Fair 2022. The Ministry of Communications, 11.584, the FIB, the FIC application. The Ministry of Communications, 11.585, the FIB, the FIC application. The Ministry of Communications, 11.586, the Senator Isan, the exclusion of nationals by the House. Communication, like mentioned, 11.576. The Ministry of Communications, 11.587, the Palawan student in Taiwan, the President, Paules, requests for increased financial assistance by the Royal. Mr. President, I have heard that the Ministry of Communications is not approved. I have heard that the 16th, the vice chairman, the vice chairman of the Senate.
The floor leader, I would like to say that Senator Rudim has been approved. Foreign Investment Act, I have heard that the FIC is going to be approved. He has been approved. He has been approved. He has been approved. He has been approved. I have heard that the Ministry of Communications is not approved. I have heard that the Ministry of Communications is not approved. I have heard that the Ministry of Communications is not approved. I have heard that the Ministry of Communications is not approved. I have heard that the Ministry of Communications is not approved. I have heard that the Ministry of Communications is not approved. I have heard that the Senator Tabulwal has been approved. I have heard that the Ministry of Affairs has been approved. I have heard that the Ministry of Affairs has been approved. I have heard that the Ministry of Affairs has been approved. I have heard that the Ministry of Affairs has been approved. I have heard that the Ministry of Affairs has been approved. I have heard that the Ministry of Affairs has been approved. I have heard that the Ministry of Affairs has been approved. The Senator Tabulwal, Chairman of Education, has been approved. I am glad.
The President, I would like to say that the House has been approved. I would like to say that the House has been approved.
Senator. Mr. Lenos. I would like to say that Mr. Lenos, Senator Isan.
I would like to say that the Vice President of the Senate, who has been appointed by the Human Trafficking Act, who has been appointed by the Special Session, but who has been appointed by the President, who has been appointed by the Special Session, 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 who has been appointed by the Special Session,
I have heard that the House has been approved. I have heard that the House has been approved.
Okay, I have heard that the next session is after.
Okay. I have heard that the Special Session is scheduled last day. I have heard that the Special Session is scheduled. I have heard that the Special Session is scheduled. I have heard that the Special Session is scheduled. I have heard that the Special Session is scheduled. I have heard that the January is not good. I am glad that Mr. Lenos has announced. Senator Rudim.
President, I would like to say that I have heard that the committee has been approved. I would like to say that the FIC board, the FIB board, Mr. Elisa Klogataklo, and the Director, Mr. Labu Gibbons, the Litler, I am sorry, have been approved. I would like to say that the House has approved the registry bill. Mr. President.
Senator Rudim, I have heard that the announcement of Senator Rudim is being approved. The Special Session is being approved. I would like to say that the Chairman has been approved. Senator Quarter.
Mr. President, I have heard that the senators have been approved. I have heard that the committee has been approved. I have heard that the 2pm at 2:00 PM, the Senate Committee on Health and Social Welfare has been invited to join.
Senator Quarter. Do you think? Senator Alderweireld.
President, I have heard that the announcement is not approved. I have heard that the House has been approved. I have heard that the Ambassador of Palau, Abdurrahshyabal, who has been appointed by the Vice President, the Minister of the I have heard that the President, the President of Palau, who has been approved.
I am glad that the senators have been approved. I have heard that the President of Taiwan has been approved. I have heard that the House has been approved. Floor Leader.
Mr. President, I would like to say that the motion has been approved. I would like to say that the longline is subject to all of the chair.
Is there a motion to move on? I am talking. I am talking.